Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, March 7th Regular City Council Meeting of the City of Bel Air Beach. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Kirk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Robin Aki, here. Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swope.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Salzman.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. First item of business is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Frank Bankard, second.
Second.
Second by Dave Gaddis, discussion. I need to move the, and I've discussed this with Patty, I'm gonna need to move the item nine out of the consent agenda. There's an error in the minutes, so we'll move that to nine. Well, they'll still be number nine, it's just gonna move to the regular agenda. Any other changes? Citizens, any changes? All favor of approval with the change I mentioned, moving the consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes seven zero, the agenda is approved. First item of business is the citizen comments, and Kyle, I'm looking straight at you. I understand we have a guest next from the Florida League of Municipal Insurance Trust, but he's not here, so just wave to me when he is. So we're gonna take three out of order, but right now we're going to item number two, which is citizen comments. I'm gonna keep pointing over here, even though it's not here anymore. It's right over here, the podium. Anyone who wishes to address us, you have three minutes, please come up, state your name and address, and then address the council. Would anyone like to address council? I see a hand back here. No. Still not good. Lynn, what's the story? We didn't fix that mic? There you go. Electric is a good thing.
Good evening, everyone. Andrea Cavani, 119 12th Street. Um, I somehow made it to the agenda tonight, so I feel like I need to speak to it. I was campaigning on February 14th. I was going around the neighborhoods and placing informational campaign cards in doorways. I was approached by a neighbor, and he instructed me not to knock on a door, so we had a brief discussion. I reassured him that I was not knocking on doors. I believe it was an elderly neighbor that he didn't want me to disturb. After the discussion, I moved away from him. He then kind of positioned himself in the crossroads, so that I either would have had to go through him and around him, or engage again, which I chose not to do. I felt like he was maybe watching me to make sure that I didn't go to that house, and I'm a responsible citizen. If he asked me not to, of course, I wasn't going to. But either way, I felt extremely unwelcome, and I felt that I really wasn't able to campaign properly that day, and that's my concern. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Andrea. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Chris Barnes, I live in 124th Street.
Speak up a bit, because I'm sorry, I'm hearing you.
Hi, I'm Chris Barnes. I'm living on 124th Street. I was also campaigning for you, Mayor Manzo, and I was...
I'm just gonna, you know, I'm gonna just, we're not, we're not supposed to campaign, so you can speak about the incident, just don't get into who it was.
I was out passing flyers out, and I was also confronted by a neighborhood in the same area, and he was kind of aggressive and confrontational with us, and wasn't very welcoming, and was just telling us not to knock on neighbors' doors, doing the same thing. Said I happen to have a aggressive Doberman Pinscher. She's not aggressive Doberman Pinscher, she's just a small 50-pound little black lab mix of some kind, and I was actually probably about 10 feet away, almost towards the other side of the street with the dog. She's actually, I'm actually in the process of doing, making her my service dog for me, and so she's not confrontational, she's not aggressive, anything like that, and so he was more confrontational with us, and trying to stop us from doing, from walking, and he was not very nice at all. So, that was about it.
Thank you. Yes.
June Van Skoye, 7th Street, Bel Air Beach. So, the occurrence, first occurrence was on Monday, and it was on Howard, and it was a resident, Mr. Lusk. He approached Andrea, and one of the firemen who were out on the street with us campaigning, but they never said a word. The can't, the firemen that have been going out with us are just a second body. They're not saying anything. Anyhow, I come back from placing a sign on Gulf Boulevard, and I see Mr. Lusk having a conversation with the two of them, and it looked kind of heated, like he was, he was having a heated conversation, not them. So, I pulled over to the side, he started to walk back to his house. He came back, because he saw my car, which stands out, and he started to approach me, and I told him I was not gonna speak to him, that I felt unsafe around the people that were campaigning for the other side. So then he proceeded to go back to his house. That was on Monday. So there was two incidents on Monday, and the third one was on Wednesday with the same gentleman. It wasn't until Wednesday when we had to file a complaint with the Sheriff's Department, because I thought three incidents was beyond what it should have been, and I just thought it might progress further. So I felt like it was important for us to follow a police report and get it on the record in case something should occur or progress further. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council? Yes, hand in the back.
Bill Lusk, Hibiscus Drive West. Can't believe I'm standing here right now. That was me. They were talking about you all called the police. I honestly, as it relates to Andrea, remember the conversation well. I told them point-blank, I love what they're doing, I love volunteering, I respect their candidate for volunteering for the city for three years, and then they asked me about voting, and I shared my perspective on the last three years. I feel as if they may have walked away wondering, why are we campaigning? It had nothing to do with blocking or aggressive. I actually thanked them, they thanked me. As it relates to the next gentleman, I recognize him, I never even talked to him. I talked to a council member that came back to our house after knocking on the door, 9:00 AM, ringing the doorbell. Yep, they had a big dog and interesting clothing on, and I'll be, for the life of me, I feel like I was set up for something, but I think people in this city know me well enough. I think my neighbors know me well enough. I'll always step up for a 92-year-old woman and say, hey, could you not knock on her door? That's the gist of it. You can make of it what you want. You filed a police report. I kindly replied with an email to Lynn Reeves, and I think I'll let that email sit. So, thanks for a couple minutes. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council? Seeing no other hands, I'll close citizen comments. Kyle, we still don't have our guest from the League of Cities. I'm gonna take item three and hold it off. Kyle, if you'll just wave your hand to me when he comes in, we'll get him at the next opportune time, okay? Next, we have a guest of honor here. We have our fire chief. Jeff Davidson. Chief Davidson.
Good evening, everyone. Jeffrey Davidson, Fire Chief for Pinellas Suncoast Fire Rescue. We're proudly serving the city of Bel Air Beach. Just wanna give you an update on the fire EMS calls here in the area. In the last, ending February 28th, we luckily, we only had 63 fire and EMS calls in Bel Air Beach. Excluding the downgraded calls, we have an average response to your calls of four minutes and 47 seconds, which is a pretty good response time. We're happy to serve you. The county standard is seven, seven and a half minutes, so four minutes and 47 seconds average is a good service to your community. Wanted to invite everybody on Saturday, March 19th, at 10:00 AM. We are having our new fire engine will be there, and we're gonna have a washdown ceremony and some refreshments, and we'd like to invite the community to come and participate. So there's some flyers over there on the counter, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Chief, could you just hang on one second, see if anybody has any questions here? Counsel, any questions for the chief?
I don't have a question. I just want to commend the people that work for you. One of my neighbors had to call 911. They called me, I ran over until you guys got there. You know, I stayed out of the way while you guys did their thing, and I was very impressed with their level of knowledge, their integrity, and the way they treated my neighbor, and it was a wonderful experience, and nice to see you guys in action. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for, for the feedback. I rarely hear, I do hear them, but I rarely hear a negative comment about Pinellas Suncoast Fire Rescue, and it's really unbelievable how many people send thank you cards, that they'll stop by in the station just to say our, our men and women go the extra effort to make sure that your needs are met, you know, even after the emergency sandal, just to make sure you have everything that you need. So, anything that we can do for you all, please just let us know.
Chief, I wanna commend you and thank you also. I mean, number one, that response time is terrific. That's absolutely outstanding, and I think the citizens need to remember that response time, what we have now, okay? I'm not, I'm not sure I'm at liberty to discuss something you and I had discussed a little while back, but there's forces at work that, that could possibly change this, and how they respond to fires and stuff. So, when the chief comes in and you read about how the, how the trucks are gonna be dispatched, and where they're being dispatched from, pay attention to that, because I had pleasure of doing fire ops training, and I thought I was in good shape, and I could barely handle a morning of what you guys do every day, you know, 12 hours a day, right? It's tough work, and mine was a simulated thing. You're doing it with real fire and real smoke. It's tough, and I will tell you this, a minute, two minutes means a lot. If you do fire ops training, you see, pick a video where a room at three minutes is one thing, and at five minutes, you can't go in the room anymore. It looks like hell, it's all flames, and it's, the roof is falling. So, seconds mean a lot in a response, and you guys are fabulous. You and your men and ladies are fabulous.
Thank you. Also, very proud of our department. For those of you who don't know about, one third of our department are service members and veterans, including myself, so I'm very proud of that department. The men and women here are here to serve, and we're happy to be here in Bel Air Beach, so thank you.
Chief, while we have you, I'll see if there's any comments from the audience. If they do, we'll just have you step aside for a second as they ask it. Anyone wanna speak with the chief? Yes, Mr. Hanzig, right up front here. Chief, just, yeah, just take two giant steps that way, and then come back to the mic. How's that?
Thank you for yours, sir.
John Hanzig, 22nd Street. I have a question for the chief. What plans, if any, does the Pinellas Suncoast have in working towards an ISO-1 certification? And the reason I ask, people don't know about it. It affects your property insurance. If your fire department is ISO-1 certified, your premiums go down.
Chief?
Didn't catch the gentleman's name, I'm sorry.
On Hanzig.
John?
Yes.
All right, that's a good question, John. So, that is one of the things that we are currently working on, so, I don't know if you guys, let me see, like, step this way. I hate to not look at you when I talk there. So, John's right, so the ISO, the Insurance Services Organization rating, that's anywhere from a one to a 10 X. And basically, they come out and they evaluate your fire department, but it's not just your fire department. So 40% of your scoring is your water, and your water department, 30% is your communications and your radio system. With the Sheriff's Office Dispatch, we always get the, it's actually 40 points on there, so we're gonna get the 40 points on there, and the rest is, is not so much your training and your equipment, the number of people that you put on scene, how fast you could put them on scene, and the parameters. So, we strive to put on a fire call, the first unit on scene in four minutes, and the last unit on scene of a first alarm within eight minutes, and you're supposed to do that 90% of the time. So, kinda good that you asked that, because one of the things I did wanna mention is, one of the things that we're doing is looking to move our Indian Rock Beach Fire Station further north in Indian Rock Beach, not into Bel Air Beach, but it'll be closer, and we actually, we better response times in the Bel Air Beach, which is why we're doing that. So, that's gonna be probably a couple of year process to do, but we have some properties that we're evaluating and how we can do that. And once we get those things settled, we'll look at reevaluating our ISO evaluation, and a lot, a lot of it has to do with record keeping and training records and inspection records, and, but mostly is response times, and the biggest portion of it is your water system. So, we're working with the municipalities to make sure the water system is where it needs to be, and the hydrants have been inspected every five years, and that the flow tests are done, they're marked, they're in the computers, all those things. There's a lot that goes into it. So, it's a big process, but that's probably something we're gonna look at. An evaluation's done about every five years, unless you ask for one sooner. So, we'll probably start that process in another year and a half, and have it completed in about two and a half years. But the number one priority right now is getting that fire station moved closer, so we could better serve your area and better serve Indian Rock Beach as well. So, thank you for asking that question. All right. Anytime you need to contact me, my email address is on our website, yesfard.org, and you can contact me at any time, and I'll try to, you know, if I don't have the answer, I'll definitely find one for you. Okay?
I have a question for you. I'm sorry, are the citizens done? I have a question. What ISO version are you currently on?
Well, we currently are an ISO rating of four, okay? And the best rating is a one. There's, there's a very small percentage of departments that are actually a one, and like I said before, the majority, 40% of that score is your water department. So, we will have to make sure we work with not only Bel Air Beach, but Bel Air Shores, Indian Rock Beach, Indian Shores, and then the incorporateable area. So, it's a little tougher to coordinate all those things, but it is something that we're working on probably. So, to get us to a class two would probably be something that we could easily do. I don't say easily, but, you know, with the work that we do and just documenting the work, because that's, that's usually where people lose their points on their scoring, is not that they didn't do the work, they just didn't document that they did the work. So, and that's the problem.
How do you pass that cost along? Are you passing that along to the taxpayers, or is there an internal?
There's no cost for that.
Cost for your ISO certification, do you even prove it?
No, ma'am, there's no cost. No, no, ma'am. And the things that they do, the record keeping is stuff, something that the lieutenants and the firefighters and the drivers do on a daily basis, and it's just making sure that it gets categorized in the right places, and we know where to pull that data from. So, when we have fire calls, they actually, they don't wanna see every fire call, they don't wanna see fire alarm and things, they just wanna see the working fires, where you needed the 15 people on scene minimum, and how fast you can get them there. So, those are the kind of things that they look for. Great questions.
Any other questions for the chief? Chief, thank you. You're always welcome here. Thanks for the great work. Hopefully, we see you on the 19th. Kyle, I saw some people come in, yes? Okay, all right, so we're gonna go back to number three, which is a presentation from, from the Florida League of Cities, Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, Level Two Certificate of Safety Excellence to the City of Bel Air Beach. This was a certificate for risk management score 100% for the FMIT Safety Excellence Initiative. Mr. Representative?
I'm gonna turn sideways, if you guys don't mind as well. First of all, I apologize for being a little bit late. I was at Bell Air Bluffs, giving them their Level One certificate, so I had two meetings back-to-back, so it was a little tight on my time. My name is Trevor Ruschny. I'm a safety and risk consultant for the Florida League of Cities, and I'm representing the FMIT, which is your insurance provider for the city. In 2019, we developed a process called the Safety Excellence Initiative. It's very similar to the ISO audit that you were just discussing with the fire department, and it's designed to encourage municipalities to create and implement safety management systems for both worker safety and public safety. So, I wanna, first of all, congratulate the city for being the first city in the entire state of Florida to go through the entire process for Level One, and that was in 2020. And then, just recently, in January of this year, you guys scored 100% on the Level Two. So, you're the first city to get Level One, and now you're the first city to get Level Two. So, that is an excellent achievement for, for you guys, and it's a, honestly, it's a, it's a great model for other cities that are going through the process currently as well. So, congratulations. Here is your certificate. Level Two. Any questions on the program, or anything like that, before I wrap it up?
Thank you, and thank you for doing the program, keeping the cities at their absolute best, and thank you for the recognition. Really appreciate it. Well, and well earned by our staff here, Kyle and Lynn Reeves, and everyone else who worked toward this. Yeah. Great, thank you. Okay, I see three sheriffs in the background. To have three, I think only two are gonna make the presentation, but we have Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, we have law enforcement and code enforcement, whichever order you'd like to go.
Well, that's weird. I can see myself in the computer now. I'm not used to that. Good evening. I'd also like to take this opportunity to let the fire department know that we applaud them every time they leave a scene also. Sergeant Switch with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, I am presenting the stats for January of 2022. Under the UCR Property and Person Crimes, I am showing one assault, which was domestic-related. I am showing one burglary and four larcenies or thefts. However, in my research, Mayor, if you remember, we discussed last month's meeting, the two that occurred that were unlocked doors at the condominiums at the north end of the city. There were an additional three or four, if I'm not mistaken, that were reported after that meeting. Again, unlocked doors, and in this one, there was a firearm that was stolen. So, again, we cannot stress enough the importance of locking doors. However, in reading the report, it looked like they were visitors from out of town, so it's kinda difficult to get that message across to them, and of course, I'm sure it was an oversight on their part, but through the research, that's what I found. Moving along, there were, it says a total of five people. However, it was a total of five charges. Those for warrants, a domestic-related incident that we just spoke about, and a driving under the influence, which was also related to the driving while his license was suspended. Under deputy activity, you will see that traffic enforcement leads that category directly followed by directed patrols. Lastly, there were, there was one crash in the city, and that's not including the one that obviously occurred, and I'm sure everybody's aware of that, when that occurred right here at the intersection, but the crash itself resulted in Bel Air Shore. And then, lastly, there were a total of 164 citations and warnings issued. Of those, 134 were warnings, 21 were traffic citations, five were parking. However, I don't have the ability to break it down whether or not they were citations or warnings, because you handle parking citations in-house, and then four were boating. And that's all I have.
I, um, I know this is the January report, but, uh, you know, once again, yesterday, minding our own business, and we got the Hollywood movies coming through with high-speed chases. You guys are doing an incredible job keeping us safe under some really scary circumstances. We had a family member right opposite where that guy crashed and grabbed somebody out of the car. They were at Krabby Builds yesterday when that happened. Kudos to the Sheriff's Department and the bravery that you folks put out day in, day out. It's just amazing, but, uh, you know, we're a sleepy little town generally, and to have these high-speed car chases, it's just getting a little scary, so.
It is, and unfortunately, I wish we could proactively prevent that from happening, but sometimes it's reactive, and half the time, it seems like it doesn't even begin in Bel Air Beach. It's just a community cut-through area. So, sometimes it'll start in clear water, they'll come through here, Largo, Indian Rocks, and work their way up.
You're two for two, and, you know, I, I'd like to say keep up the good work, but I'd like it to, it'd be nice if it just would go away. This one started, I know, in Dunedin, but, you know, hopefully, we won't see it anytime soon. It's a little scary, so.
It is.
Counsel, do we have any comments or questions for the sheriff? Citizens, anything?
I, I did have one. That carjacking that happened, was that, was that a minor, or what, what was the age?
Unfortunately, I can't comment on it, comment on it, and the only reason I can't is because I just came on at 6 o'clock, and I just became aware of that through the news feed that we get through our internet. So, if you want, I can look into it, but based on what I saw, I don't believe it was a minor. I believe it was an adult.
If anybody, that's fine.
If you can.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Citizens, any comments?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Code enforcement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, citizens. Steve Clapke, for the record, just to let you know, February was a very busy month in code enforcement. Again, still a crackdown on the contractors that are not pulling permits, or contractors that are not licensed working in Pinellas County, working very diligently with the, the Building Department and the Department of Licensing. We had quite a few more issues with people not pulling permits, and I will tell you that, again, with the good working relationship that we have with the Building Department and the Licensing Bureau, they are actually really cracking down. I will tell you that on a couple occasions, when I pulled up to a home where they're doing work, first thing was, whoa, we heard about you, here's our permit, and, and that's what we wanna see. And again, that's, that's for the protection of the citizens of this city, and, again, no real major incidents to report, but, again, we're out there actively going after these contractors, and some of the other, other code violations, you know, have kind of dwindled down. There was some citizens that we sent letters to that have responded and took care of their incidents. So, I think last month, I had like 12 open cases, and I think I'm down to two. So, other than that, it's, it's been a, it's been productive, and again, I enjoy what I'm doing.
Deputy, I, it's, it's hard not to notice the step up in the enforcement on the permit situation. So, hopefully, the word will get out, but if it doesn't get out, maybe they'll watch the movie here, or the film of this night, and, I mean, you're gonna get them. I mean, it's all over the place. It's like every day, you're getting people. So, it definitely gotta pull the permit. If you need to pull one, get it.
Perfect. And, and like I said, I thank Lynn and, and Laura for coming up with that new spreadsheet that works out a lot better, so you guys can see exactly what we're doing. And any incident that I come across, I go ahead and log it in there, whether it's a parking citation, or a permit, or whatever the issue is.
Counsel? Citizens? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Have a good day.
Item six is the city attorney report. Attorney Salzman?
Mayor, council members have met with the city manager. We've gone through a few of the outstanding issues that we're resolving. Nothing of great note to bring forward to council. There's some resident issues that we're resolving, looking at some other contract issues, but nothing to bring forward to council at this point. We will meet, try to meet as often as necessary. I'm working on, I would say, probably three different issues right now.
Anyone have any questions, counsel? Citizens, any questions for the city attorney? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
City manager?
Yeah, yes, Mayor and Council. This, I've given you my report in the packet. Just a couple things. This is a test operation tonight with the new audio and stuff, and, you know, we'll work the kinks out. We're still waiting for the parts to, to extend the Wi-Fi over in here, so when we do move into the iPads, then we'll have a better Wi-Fi net in this room. The city attorneys, RFP is going out. It's gonna be published on the 9th, so it'll, it'll go out this week, and we've got two bids out. 7th Street and 16th Street, Seawall and Boat Dock, as I mentioned here, and the 13th Street Franch. Brett did provide me last week with the Section 94 of the code, which I mentioned here, and we'll be bringing that to a work session to get that cleaned up. That's all I've got.
Any questions for the city manager?
Um, on Gulf Boulevard, you know how that's blocked off, and we have to merge. Can you, do you know what's going on, or how much longer, and any idea, any updates?
It's a, it was a sewer issue, and they're replacing the pipe. They started out, blank in the street, but they, they started out doing a crosscut. It's a contractor, they haven't given me any timeframe when it'll be finished. The other day, it looked like they were starting to fill it back up, but then they were digging it out again, so no, no firm date on that.
I have a question. The 16th Street Seawall renovation, we spoke last week, and we, you mentioned 16th and 17th. Are those, the, the asphalt, is that part of this project, or is this something else?
No, this is the Seawall. 16th and 17th Street are the Stormwater Project, and we're getting a proposal from dual engineering to do the design for that currently.
Okay. Do you know when that'll happen?
I'm waiting for the thing. I'm waiting for the thing at, at any time and then we'll get the design done, which usually takes four or five months.
Okay.
For the city manager. Our normal engineer had some health issues and you backfilled with somebody else. Is that all working well? The, the stand-in engineering?
Uh, it, it, it's working pretty well. Uh, you know, the, the, the difference is Larry was a one-person show. And he would come and a lot of stuff got moved out a lot faster. But, uh, it, it might delay a, a, like a, a house construction, uh, review. It, it might take a couple of weeks now where with Larry, we, we got comments back in a week. So that, that's the only real push. The other permits, we're not having any issue with.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions for the city manager? Citizens, anybody have a question for the city manager? Just come to the podium, please.
Jim Van Sgoys, Seventh Street. Um, there is two poles that I've seen in the city. And I'm just wondering if this is five G. Have you noticed them? They have a, like a tall tube, rusted tube sitting on telephone poles. Is that five G?
I don't know if it's been upgraded, but that is part of the communication system for the satellites. I don't know for a fact that it's five G. They, they, the, the way that it's went since the legislature kind of took away our authority. We don't really, they can come in and put them wherever they want. We can.
Well, I know that we cannot, we cannot dictate where they put them. We can dictate though, according to the, to the statute. That we can dictate how they look, the beautification of them.
You can, you can dictate a little bit about landscaping around them, but the, the pole is not really gonna change.
Yeah. All right.
They took it away from the, the cities to issue right-of-way permits and things of that nature. So.
Lynn is speaking about, that's what's known as preemption. Uh, sometimes Tallahassee says that they don't want the local cities, the localities to handle something. And this is a situation with the five G. So, um, yeah, we have very limited as to what we're able to do. So you may find a five G antenna and that's not Lynn Reeves or the city or the city council. It's, uh, Tallahassee. And the big, um, cell phone companies.
Yeah, they, and like I said, they pretty much have a free-for-all to put them in the right-of-way wherever they want. Most of them look like it's a single pole. Sometimes I call it an icebox that's next to them, a little. Uh, actually, there's one across the street right here. Uh, and then it's got like a, uh, Shriner's cap on top of it is an example. That's, that's what it is.
Any other questions for the city manager? All right. Uh, yes. Like, come up, come up, introduce yourself and speak into the mic. Can you get it on record?
The Sixteenth Street, did you say the Boat Dock there? You mentioned some.
The, uh, Sewall is going out to bid or it's out to bid right now.
There's a little, what do you call that at the end of that street then? The fishing? No, there's, there's a platform out there.
Yeah, the dock.
Okay. You're not doing anything with that?
No, they will modify the Sewall and they'll have to adjust it.
The reason I ask is it used to be able, you could pick somebody up on a boat there. There was two steps going down that rotted away. That disappeared. Nobody fixed that. There was a hinge system so you could. You know, it's got the. You can lift that up, get on a boat, go down the two steps. The steps rotted away, never got replaced. The hinge system, they put a solid board in there, reinforced it and that's it. Are we doing anything with that or is anybody aware of that even?
No, we're aware of it. Actually, uh, it didn't rot away. It was hit by a boat.
Well, regardless, the steps are gone.
Yeah. And they're, they're gone. That a boat hit it and knocked it loose. Uh, we have projects for docks. That's not the next one. The next one is Seventh Street, uh, that we're gonna.
But is that somewhere on the list? Put it back to the way.
Right. Well, we'll replace the dock over time, the whole thing.
In a year down the road, a couple of years down the road?
Probably a couple of years.
It is.
Yeah.
And we pulled that hinge thing out for what reason?
So you wouldn't go off. There was a reason.
So you can't use it is my point.
Right.
And it's been out of commission at least a year, year and a half.
No, I'm aware that somebody hit it with a boat.
Well, as long as somebody's aware of it, because I used to use that. I can't use it anymore. And as far as the ramp down here, when are those piers going in? I'm, I'm not, I'm a little ignorant on that. Or, or whatever we had there, we're putting something back in.
There, uh, right now, what is out to bid is the ramp and the Sewall there. After that's finished, then we, we are in the process of getting quotes for the dock to be repaid.
So that's a waste.
No, no, it'll be this fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other citizen questions for the city manager? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the city manager's report. Thank you. City clerk?
On my report, the election, that'll be ongoing through the month of March. The municipal codifying, I'm waiting for the proofs to come back from municipal code. So we can get those codified and then the public records request that's in flowing, ongoing. And that's my report.
Any questions for the city clerk? Glenn?
Which, which municipal codes are still waiting?
Pardon me?
Which municipal codes are still hanging out there right now, just waiting to be finished and codified?
I don't have that in front of me, but I can get it to you.
I'll, I'll check with you, Mayor.
Okay.
The other city council comments, questions for the city clerk? Citizens, any questions for the city clerk? I'll close. City clerk report. Thank you, Patty. Okay, we're going to the regular agenda. We moved item nine off consent into regular. Uh, this is a motion to approve the February seventh, twenty twenty-two city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion, please? Moved by Glenn Gunn.
Second.
A second by Dave Gaddis. Uh, comments starting with Glenn Gunn.
I'll defer.
Okay. Are you differing to me? Yes, thank you. Um, so I only had one change and Patty, uh, you and I went over this. I am prepared if you want to play the audio if we need to do that. The, uh, last comment on the notes here, it said, Mayor Manzo found council member Natero's point of order valid. It should be not valid. And that occurs at fifty-four minutes and thirty-seven seconds of the audio tape. And if the council wants to hear it, I think I can pull it up on my phone or you can take my word because that's a pretty exact measurement there. So, um, that was it. Other than that, I find the minutes to be absolutely fine.
Okay, um, Mayor Manzo, I would have to listen to it to, and then, you know, just to make.
Want me to play it now? If I had reception in here, I can play it. We don't have to play the whole tape. We just need to start like at fifty.
No, I have my minute. I have each, just like you have a timed, I have a time.
Okay.
So I can go back.
So you can listen to it.
But yeah, can we do it just like we did last time contingent on?
I have, I have no problem with that. And if you have, and if you think I said something else, then contact me privately and I'll, I, I think I, I actually explained why I said no on that one. So it came up afterward, you'll see.
Okay.
Okay. Other than that, I'm fine. Any other council discussion or comments? Citizen comments? Glenn Gunn, last word. So with that change conditional upon Patty finding what I found in terms of the, uh, the mistake in terms of the point of order. We'll vote on the approval of the February seventh, twenty twenty-two city council meeting minutes. All in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And anyone opposed? It's seven to zero, Patty. And so they're approved conditionally with that change and you'll contact me if there's a problem.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item ten, uh, consideration of proposed park and recreation board event for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This is a fly me to the moon Frank Sinatra Rat Pack style musical event. Funding is in the FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two board budget. Approved by the city council. First, let's start with a motion. Moved by Glenn Gunn and a second. Second by Leslie Natero. Glenn?
I'll defer to the park and rec.
Okay, I think we have the park and rec chair here. Tammy Lavenda?
Everyone, how are you? Tammy Lavenda, Park and Rec Board Chair. So I don't know if you just, this event, if you went to Jazz in the Park last fall, will be very similarly set up. It's just a different music style. Um, we're gonna try to get a pizza truck, you know, all things Italian that night. And we're basically using for the budget, what we use for the flyers last year. Because we don't have to mail out flyers this year because we have the sign out front. So between, um, the website and the sign, I think we'll be able to get the word out and with a few, if you guys wanna, want us to put this together. So if you have any questions, I believe you have the detailed budget sheet, everything else. Cause I know last year there were lots of issues about the parking and the safety and, and it went flawlessly. And we were gonna follow the exact same plan.
Uh, counsel, well, Tammy, if you, if you don't mind just staying up there, if anyone has questions to you and then we'll debate it, you can sit down. But let's see if anybody has questions for you first while we have you here. Any questions for Tammy? Frank?
Last year, um, the Jazz in the Park, how many attended it? Do you know?
Sure, yeah, about a hundred.
About a hundred? Any out-of-towners? Or are you, not a fair question, I guess.
Out-of-towners mean like someone that wasn't a Bel Air Beach resident. Um, other than like my guests that I invited, one person showed up. That we were like, we weren't sure, we didn't ask.
Okay.
But, you know, based on discussions that we've had in the past, it was, we're not inviting everyone in every neighborhood. But if a couple of people show up, we're definitely not gonna kick them out. It's, it's, I just would never do that. So.
I understand that, but when you put it on the sign out front, then you have traffic, especially this time of year. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Tammy before we debate?
Uh, yes, I have something. Uh, when you put it on the sign, uh, then can't we just put a private Bel Air Beach, uh, verbiage in front of it? So that just everybody driving down the street won't think it's an open public one. And, um, yeah, Tammy, there was a few people at the last one that came with other people though that lived here. I, I noticed. Yeah. So, you know, and granted you didn't kick them out, but, um, I think we could probably put that on the sign as well. Lynn, isn't there room for something like that?
Yeah, we can, we can add something to the sign if we want to. Uh, I don't think that's a big deal. And actually, I wouldn't think April thirtieth, by that time, the, the snowbirds are gone. And so we're not gonna have the, the mob of traffic typically.
Counsel, any other questions for Tammy Lavenda? Tammy, thank you. We'll debate it now. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Now back to the council, Glenn, you deferred. So council, it's open for comments and debate.
Um, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea. I probably would not want to put that only private for Bel Air Beach. Cause that seems very unwelcoming. And even if that's the vibe, I don't think that should necessarily be advertised. It doesn't look good for the city when we're like us only. So I just think it should be on there. If out-of-town people come, well then, that's just what you do. And more the merrier.
Frank?
I, I, I'm hoping to support this since if we're not gonna put it, I, I like Councilwoman Swope's idea, um, with the private. I understand what your feelings are, but then let's sell tickets to it. Since there's only a hundred people that attended it and there's what sixteen hundred residents, even if there's only two dollars a ticket. All right, that can keep it more private. Just my thoughts. Cause she, she does a fabulous job, the beach cleanups and everything else. She, she is a gift to this city. So I, I commend her for everything.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to agree with both of you. Um, Robin, I think it's just nasty to say no one else is invited. If someone happens to come, we got room, we're paying one price here. So come on down. It doesn't really matter. It's not like we're gonna have, this isn't gonna be Woodstock. And a hundred thousand people are gonna show up. Frank, though, I'm with you. I don't know, you know, we were involved with the original one. This was, you know, the idea of having stuff in the city, I think I floated back when we first started this, uh, this council here three years ago. And we got some pushback from some citizens and some of the pushback we got was should we be using city money for this? So the first event that we ran, which was the biggest event that's been run probably in decades, which was the city festival. That city festival was completes, completely self-sustaining. In fact, the city's festival made seventeen hundred dollars after all expenses were paid. Now, what I'm seeing here and budget, the way we did this, because I remember it well on the council, we said, we didn't know how, if we'd even get a, a sponsor the first time. So what we said was we're gonna put money aside in the budget and if needed, we'll sponsor it. Cause the last thing we're gonna do is tell everyone we're gonna have a festival and then say, well, you know, it's canceled at the last second. So we were able to get sponsors and it, it was, it was more than self-funding. We made money. Um, somehow along the line, we went away from that model and now it's like the city's paying for all of this stuff. And that's where I have a little bit of a problem. Okay. I love the music of Frank Sinatra. I saw Frank Sinatra thirteen times when he was alive. I saw him in three different states. I'll go to this thing. I'm sure it'll be wonderful. Okay. And I'll pay five dollars or ten dollars or whatever it's gonna be if, if that's what they're gonna charge to people. But I, I don't know that we should be in the entertainment business here. The budget should be the fallback if we can't get sponsors or we don't want to charge a ticket price. Um, it, because we're just, at this point, I mean, we're, we were giving gift certificates as prizes at the Halloween contest. That's all coming out of taxpayer money and that's where I have a problem with it. Not the event, they're, they're done extremely well. But the Parks Board did a great job on every single event that I've seen. I did, I was in a jazz, but I saw the other one, um, and it was great. But I, in Christmas lighting, all that stuff was great, but I don't think we should be using our city money unless it's a backup, unless we can't get sponsors. And I know you'd get sponsors for this if you worked at it. That's all I wanna say. Glenn?
This is a real budget decision. So it was made when we created this budget. So going back now to try and argue it is probably not worth the time and effort. I would think that for next year's budget, when we sit down and start thinking about this, yeah, let's go ahead and analyze it a little further. At the end of the day, if only five people show up to this thing, it's gonna cost fifteen hundred dollars and fifty-seven. Fifteen hundred fifty-seven, right? If two hundred people show up, it's gonna cost fifteen fifty-seven. If five hundred people show up, it's gonna cost maybe a little bit more, but it's gonna be a marginal cost, fifteen fifty-seven. So I'm with Robin. Let's, let's be neighborly about this thing. It's, it's aimed at residents. We're giving back to our residents and, uh, we can debate this, the merits of this thing next, in the next budget cycle. But we've already made this decision. Let's, let's continue to move forward. We're making great progress and we've done great good with this, uh, park and rec boards. Good job. I support it. Thank you.
I, I'd like to echo what Mr. Gunn said. Um, we voted on this budget. And, uh, I, I, I don't really see a, a problem with funding this, uh, this event. The last one was excellent. Everyone was relaxed. It was a, a nice evening. The sun was setting and, uh, great music and a great time to get to know our neighbors. I didn't see, uh, I, I didn't see a, a lot of people coming in from outside. And, uh, um, I, I think, looking back, I think one of the reasons why we had the sponsors and, and, uh, brought in all the, the various vendors was because we were trying to make it more of a, uh, area-wide event instead of a Bel Air Beach event. Uh, so I think that if we're smart with the way that we word the, the, the verbiage on the sign. We can let people know it's really for our community, but if you happen to be nearby and you do stop in, we're not going to, uh, turn you away. And that's, uh, that's it. That's all I've got.
Counsel, any other comments? Open it up to the citizens.
Well, I would just say real quick, um, you know, I, I kinda like the idea of sponsors. It may be a little bit too late in the game to do it now. But maybe I would encourage for the next event to try to work on sponsors or try to be more financially neutral. Because I do remember way back and when we were starting events, um, one of the biggest complaint from many council members was about the cost to the city and why should our city tax dollars go on for a festival or a Halloween thing? So I just wanna remind the people that said that, that they said that and they may change their mind and that's fine. I'm just pointing out the, the past comments. So I would just say, just to be smart financially going forward. I mean, if you can find a sponsor, I'm sure the pizza truck, the Italian ice people would be happy to pay a nominal fee because they'd make way more money. Um, than they paid. So I don't see like, you know, you could probably get so many off of them. So I think that for going forward, the next event, we should really think about trying to get some sponsorships, but it may be too late right now for this one in a planning sense.
Mayor, just, just to let you know, the, the park and rec board is working on a sponsorship package. It's not totally complete yet, but they are gonna bring something to the council for the future.
Okay, any other city council comments? I'll now open up to citizens. See no hands. We'll come back to the city council and Glenn, you'll get the last word.
No, I think we've covered all the merits of this thing. I think it's good for the community and I'm all for it. I support it. No, I think we've covered all the merits of this thing. I think it's good for the community and I'm all for it. I support it. We've done a great job with it. Thank you.
Okay, so what we have in front of us now is considered item number ten, consideration of proposed park and recreation board event for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We presented a budget of fifteen hundred fifty-seven dollars for this. It's applied me to the moon Rat Pack style event. Uh, yes vote is going to get this passed and moved forward. I'm gonna do a voice vote on this. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Seven, zero. Item eleven, consideration of merit pay increase based on annual evaluation criteria for city manager. Some merit increase based on the city council employee evaluations. Uh, first aid motion?
So moved.
Glenn Gunn? Second? I'm sorry, was that Leslie?
No, it's me, Aki.
Bob and Aki, sorry. It's hard, I can't even see you from here.
I'm short.
That's no problem, it's the, the furniture here. Okay, uh, Glenn Gunn.
And numbers and evaluations are in the package unless there's some debate.
Just to correct to, Patty had issued some replacement uh, pages. I know we got them. Everybody in the city has also had the opportunity to see the replacement scores and everything.
It's on the website, yes.
Okay, good, good. Any other council comments?
Yes, I would like to add something. Um, I know it was very concerning to a number of people last year during the reviews and stuff that um, I was in violation of an ethics issue, so I just wanna let everybody in this community be fully aware so that your mind is clear that that was not one, neither is this. I've not only spoke to the Ethics Commission and been cleared, I also have a personal attorney, which was the chair of the Ethics Board and have been cleared. City, former city attorney Fred Riley has cleared me. The Real Estate Board, which doesn't need to clear me, but they have cleared me. My broker has cleared me. There is no violation. I just want everybody to know that upfront, that I have every legal right to do my responsibilities as a city council member and evaluate the city manager and grade him on his uh, rating for his score.
Counsel, any other comments? Citizens' comments? Back to council. Glenn, last word.
As you move, information's in the packet, the valuations are there, the numbers are clear and.
And what we would be taught, this isn't, actually, this isn't in the question, so I'm gonna add this to the question. We're talking about a three percent raise. That's what the numbers show. Correct everyone on council? Did I say that correctly? If any, if I didn't say that correctly, say something. Okay, so it's a three percent raise, so I'm gonna call the question with that in it then. Consideration of three percent merit pay increase based on the annual evaluation criteria for the city manager. That's based upon the evaluations that were in the packet. I'm gonna do this out of voice vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Seven, zero. Congratulations, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's do it one more time for the city clerk here. Consideration of merit pay increase on, based on annual evaluation criteria for the city clerk. This is a merit increase based on the city council employee evaluations. And Patty, I know you got the tables right for your raise. That worked, I'm just kidding you. They were perfect for hers. Uh, first emotion?
So moved.
Moved by Leslie Nataro.
Second.
And a second by Dave Gaddis. Leslie?
Um, I stand by what everybody said in their evaluations. We're very lucky to have Patty here.
Morning information.
Yes.
Speaking to the microphone.
Supposed to be working.
My bad. Is that better?
Yes ma'am.
Go ahead. Um, did you hear it, John, or we need to replay, repeat it? Yeah, please, that Wesley, if you don't mind?
I just said I, I stand by everything that's in the evaluation. We're very lucky to have Patty here and she deserves it.
And again, this is, would be for a three percent uh, increase, merit increase based upon the table and the scores. Any other council comments? Any citizen comments? Back to council. Leslie Nataro, now last word.
Let's vote on it.
Okay, so this is a consideration of a three percent merit pay increase based on the annual evaluation for Patty Gentry for this last year. Again, I'll do a voice vote, yes vote, we'll get that raise. All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Seven to zero. Patty, congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business, council members?
Um, item fourteen.
Hang on, we're not on fourteen yet. I'm on thirteen.
I'm sorry.
Okay. And I'll take fourteen in order with, uh, I'll call the individuals. So item fourteen is unfinished business. Do we have anything? Mr. Reeves, I have one thing and I don't, I'm not gonna make a, you're gonna know what I'm talking about, okay? Remember we had a meeting about the water and easements? Okay, that's still unfinished, so I just want that not to be forgotten about. I know Fred Riley was working on it. There was lots of questions, but I don't want anybody to get all excited about it. You and I and Fred were looking back into the history of Florida on that, so um, I just wanna make sure it doesn't get lost on the radar.
No, it, it hasn't actually, uh, just before Fred left, we, we had a discussion with a, an attorney uh, from the, the homeowner's lawyer. And uh, he found some, some things in it that, that technically what they would have to do based on what Fred told me and Andy and I have talked about a little bit, uh, that they would have to go to FDEP to get title to it if they wanted. What FDEP is gonna do?
We have no idea what they'll do.
Right.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to, you're aware of it and Andrew, you're aware of it also. Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Did anybody else have any unfinished business?
Um, I'm, I'm a little confused here because fourteen's supposed to be city council comments?
Yeah, we're on, we're on unfinished business. I'm a thirteen, yeah.
Yeah, but all right, I don't know why there's a six-page email in four.
I, I don't know why either, but we're going to be addressing that momentarily, so.
Oh, is that city, is that city council business or is that unfinished?
We'll be addressing it momentarily. Let me get through thirteen and we're gonna bring fourteen up and I'm gonna be coming around to everybody on this council. Um, so number thirteen, anybody else, any other unfinished business? None, that's closed. Now we're going on item fourteen. It's an odd month. We start reverse alphabetically and we start with Rita Swope.
Um, yes, I'm actually the one council member banker that put that in here. Um, the reason why I did is I just feel like that this city and this council can come to some kind of a middle ground with everybody. I mean, that way we don't have things that happen like this. It's just, we need to come to the middle ground. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add about it. Um, I am going to say that I am very excited that this chapter of my life is over and ending and uh, more power to the new people that come in. And I'm really looking forward to getting back to um, what I'm gonna call the real world. Um, so you know, I hope y'all enjoy yourselves, get out and vote. Um, it's coming up. Hopefully the candidates that have signs out there will get out and clean those up immediately afterwards, so the city can look nice. Um, that's actually all I have to say, so I'm glad my chapter is over.
Leslie Nataro.
No additional comments.
Glenn Gunn.
I like the new reporting format. I think it's really kind of move things along and the transparency before the meetings is really kinda nice to get your thoughts in line, so great job by the staff. I think you've done a great job implementing the, the new reporting format. Good job. That's all.
And if you don't mind, I, I like it too. Does anybody have any comments on that real fast, just so we have a little feedback? The new reporting format?
I think it's great.
I think it's working good.
It's smooth. I like it.
Yep.
Good, makes sense.
Universal. We actually agree on something. That's great. Frank Bankard?
Well, getting back to this six-page, I, I don't know if it's an email or not that the councilwoman had put in, but my name's mentioned in here at least ten times. And I think there's a history that needs to be cleared up here.
You have the floor. I'm gonna give the same um, um, note to you that I gave to the citizens when they spoke. We're not gonna speak about any particular campaign and we're not gonna attack any individuals, but you can certainly speak about your actions and what you want to do on this.
Well, I wanna enter this. It's, it's a little lengthy, but I wanna enter into the record and I have emails to back it up.
Okay, are you adding, are you asking that this be entered word for word?
Yes, and I have it typed out here too.
Patty loves you for that, I'm sure. Okay, so Patty, this is.
I can email, I can email it to Patty too if she want, if, if she's.
Frank, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Okay, there's a, uh, this is about light item fourteen, uh, city agenda this day about Mr. Lusk on his Hibiscus Drive. Um, there's a little history here. On February sixth last year, I was out door-to-door campaigning for myself. I met Mr. Lusk that day who spoke to me for about twenty minutes about the city primarily about his boating and Marina, which he has a boat slip. After my election to council, I further received an email from Mr. Lusk, which I want to quote, "You did all the right things to earn the most votes. Congrats, Frank." "Last year at our council meeting in October discussing buoys, it was stated by a council member, because I brought up this, the issues of buoys missing in Bella Shores and Bella Beach, is now under scrutiny of improper marking on our buoys." "A member of council also noted, which was sustained by another, it is to their understanding that other neighboring towns also are under scrutiny because of my persistence on this matter." "First, I want to clear that misleading statement up. On March third last week, I attended and spoke to the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, FWC, in Tampa. While I, while I will get more in-depth at that meeting in, in this report, I want to note, I was told towns and cities that have buoys and markers marked idle speed, no wake, are not required to change their buoy markers because they are grandfathered in because these permits are perpetual." "The problem here, according to FWC, our city asked to modify the perpetual permit, which was granted last year, which takes away from the grandfathering clause, hence changing the current buoy language." "Furthermore, in October twenty twenty-one, I received a call from Mr. Lusk about the buoys possibly being changed in Bella Beach because I raised issues with FWC. I told Mr. Lusk I was on vacation with my wife and he said, can you give me a few moments? Mr. Lusk and I went into a conversation lasting one hour and forty-four minutes about him being a boater and enjoying the rights to anchor his boat near the shoreline and go to his home and to attend personal business. I asked Mr. Lusk numerous times, as my wife became increasingly angry, to get back to Mr. Lusk, but each request was followed by just a few more moments. When Mr. Lusk said to me that boaters should be able to enjoy the ocean and golf anywhere they want, and those that want to swim should go to lakes, I knew my time was being wasted and I told him I needed to get back to my wife, but noted I would send him documentation requiring permits, et cetera. I further agreed to meet with him later if he wished to discuss this matter. The meeting at Maggie May's the following week was another one and three-quarter hours long. After the first thirty minutes, I told Mr. Lusk, just, we just have a difference of opinion and you're holding me to actions which occurred a year before I sat on council and proceeded to get up and leave. Mr. Lusk then said, so you're going to leave and not hear me out? I said, again, last week and today, it seems it's the same position, although our at a courtesy and being a council member, I stayed for another hour and a quarter. But when two women told us we were disturbing their breakfast, I said we needed to end this and wished Mr. Lusk a good day. That then followed by two more phone calls and text messages. I further provided Mr. Lusk recent boating incidents of swimmers and bather's being hit in Florida, which he replied, they are not in Bella Beach. Hopefully these past events clearly illustrated that I have fulfilled my oath in representing and hearing out a constituent by nearly spending four hours on one subject, not to mention time for research and providing it to him. Now under Mr. Lusk's fabricated falsehoods specifically relating to me, so noted in section fourteen of the minutes tonight. One, Mr. Lusk remarks of my door-to-door campaigning with fire personnel of Pinellas County on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. "The time of day was ten AM, not nine AM, as Mr. Lusk mistakenly cites. The firemen who were out campaigning for the mayor never showed on, showed to campaign until nine thirty AM because they had a call-out at three AM, which lengthened their shift. The fireman who I was with parked his truck towards the end of Howard on the water side of Hibiscus, not in front of Mr. Lusk's house, as mistakenly cited in the email. I wore no hooded sweatshirt ever going door-to-door campaigning, and especially not that day. The fireman who was out supporting did his, did have his shelter dog with him, who he takes to the fire company. While I did go to Mr. Lusk's house, knocked on his door, no answer was received and I left a flyer at his door. I want to note, while I spent an ample amount of time last year at Mr. Lusk's house, his home did not resonate to me that it was his home while door-to-door. I further knocked on about seven hundred doors the previous year as well. Simply, I do not earmark a person's home. While proceeding south on Hibiscus, I did notice Mr. Lusk waving his arms and hands at me in the street, which I waved back but continued door-to-door. After completing our door-to-door, the fireman and I went back to his vehicle to go to our next destination. Mr. Lusk was still in the street when we walked by and was on the phone and said, Frank, I need to talk to you. The fireman and I stood and Bill continued to talk on the phone. I then said, after about one minute, what do you want? Mr. Lusk replied, can't you see I'm on the phone and you will have to wait until I'm done? I then said, good day, and proceeded to walk away, which followed Mr. Lusk putting the phone down and saying, I was rude for not letting him complete his call. Mr. Lusk then said, Frank, a number of elderly residents are scared when people knock on their doors and I'm asking you not to do this. I said, Bill, a year ago, you were thrilled with door-to-door campaigning. If anyone does not want to answer, they don't. And I never spend more than one minute at any home when there is no answer. Mr. Lusk said, Frank, let me talk. I said, Bill, you only want to delay my work here. Have a nice day. And we proceeded down the street and got into the fireman's truck. Mr. Lusk so notes that I filed a police report on February sixteenth on this matter in those minutes. I have not filed any police report on that day or my entire tenure in this city. Mr. Lusk applies that he is a spokesman for the elderly and expects others to follow his direction. Mr. Lusk is not an elected official of this city. If he desires to represent the elderly or anyone else, he should seek elected office. Finally, Mr. Lusk contacted me by email on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, or twenty-two days earlier from the feb- February sixteenth issue, after I blind copied him and many other residents about a city matter regarding beach emeralds. He replied, he did not want to receive further email communications, campaigning, lobbying, and/or communications from me anymore. He further claimed my attempt to bring back shade was a rogue attempt. I responded, so no further communication occurs, and I don't want to inadvertently send him another, please block my email. That proceeded by his assistant then contacting me. Then an irate call from Mr. Lusk, who said loudly, I don't want any further communications from you, and hung up the phone. While Mr. Lusk asked our city four questions in that email, who only God would know the answers and not our city manager's job or duties, he ends his email to our city manager, what has happened to our beautiful city? I believe our city is as beautiful as the day I moved into it. Is my belief that my First Amendment rights and decisions by the Supreme Court give me a right to campaign door-to-door, which I have done for over forty years. The campaign season, I've, this campaign season, I've spoken to supporters on both sides and the fence. Not one was irate or impolite. It is very peculiar, Mr. Lusk, twenty-two days prior to February sixteenth, unequivocally demanding no further communications to him by me, but stood in the street waiting for him. While I am a councilman of this city, I will represent all citizens. Although expecting me to stand in the street until he finished a call, legitimate or not, is completely disrespectful and in his word, rogue attempt to delay my business. More importantly, to waste a fireman's time who has been out since three AM serving this county is disheartening. Possibly his questions can be answered by looking into a mirror in his own home. Frank, thanks. And I have the emails of this history I wanna present to Patty.
Okay, you want that included in our stuff? Okay, so Patty, that's a included, to be included in the next set of minutes?
Yes.
Okay. You can do that afterward. That's fine.
And just to follow up on my FWC meeting, um, when I was talking to them about the buoy issues, uh, the chairman actually had a Bill Walton take me out and another gentleman, believe their attorney. And they said, here's the issue. You put in for a permit amendment, which now has to have the buoy's names changed. I said, does it? And he says, yes. And that's when we got into the, the perpetual permits of other cities not even being addressed. I contacted FWC last year. They said they never went to any city on this side of the Gulf, okay, to have their buoys changed. So that was a misstatement by this council when they threw it out to me last year. I also said, so because we amended the permit, buoys now have to be changed. And he said, yes. I said, well, I have three emails, which I gave their secretary, stating what language do you want on these buoys in May of twenty twenty? Each one said idle speed, no wake, and that goes back to two nineteen, two thousand nineteen. Attorney then said, well, there's a problem. We will take this back to Tallahassee and get back to you. I don't expect anything in return, but I'm gonna keep filing, as Frank Bankard's citizen, more appeals with him. That's all I have to.
Thank you, Frank. Robin Aki?
No, I, just before I go to me, I just want it for Frank's thing. I mean, um, I can attest he wasn't wearing a. before we go to me, I just want it for Frank's thing. I mean, um, I can attest he wasn't wearing a hood because I just looked at my ring. Remember I talked to you my ring when you rang the dip Lord bell and he didn't have a hood on? So I have video if anyone wants to see it. So he wasn't wearing a hoodie, he was just a sweatshirt. So I can confirm that by video when I talked to him to say I wasn't home and sorry, but thank you. Um, as far as my comments, um, I don't really have any comments. I say good luck to all the candidates. Um, doesn't matter who you vote for, the most important thing about this election is to vote. Doesn't matter who, just vote. That's the best thing you could do for yourself, your country, your city is to to vote. So I just encourage everybody to please vote.
Thank you. Dave Piaris.
I think that this is our, unless we have an emergency meeting, this will be our last uh council meeting in this format. Don't know who's staying, who's uh who's leaving, but it's been an honor to serve with each and every one of you. And uh definitely, it's been um a rewarding three years. I've learned much about the city and uh and I've also learned much about each and every one of you. Um, I wish all the candidates the best of luck. I also would like to encourage everyone, if you've not voted, please do so. And uh we'll see you on March the fifteenth.
Thank you, Dave. Frank, I want to first address the pack, this item fourteen that was placed in here. Um, I did not file that police report. I was home. And the reason why I was home through a lot of this election was so that these events didn't happen directly with me. Um, the reason why firemen were going around with campaign workers was so that there was protection. Okay? Um, the final straw, the final straw, and I'm not going to embarrass the person because that person is here today. I'm not even going to say the person's sex, but there was a person who was screaming. It wasn't Bill Lust, okay? This was different. This was a different street. At two of my campaign workers saying, did you see this? Did you see that? Just jawboning. No one in this city should have to go through that. Had I been there, I would have got my telephone out and recorded it and you would have been facing a criminal harassment charge. That is harassment. You don't do that. You want to campaign? You can knock on doors. You can knock on the door right after we get done if you want. People have done that, but you can't be doing this to people. You can't be doing this around the city. And in terms of whose house you can go to? Anyone who's campaigning, anyone for anything, by the way, president, vice president, uh Congress, whatever, you can go to any house you want. If a person asks you to leave, you have to leave. That's it. They have no right whatsoever to tell you not to go to someone else's house. That's none of their damn business and it happened several times and that's why a report was filed. If it happens again, it'll be more than a report. It'll be a full complaint. Not going to tolerate it for anybody and that would go if 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 my opponent was going through it, I wouldn't tolerate for him. I would never stand for that. So I applaud everyone who's campaigned and put their hat in the ring here. I'm gonna, me and Dave may not agree on everything, but one thing I do agree on. Um, it's been an honor to serve on this. This is our last meeting unless there's an emergency of this council. Um, I think as a whole, we may have had issues where we agreed and disagreed, but I think one thing we can all agree where we leave Beller Beach now, three years ago, we are in a much better place than where we were three years ago. We've helped the city. I'm proud of the work I've done. I think everybody else on this council should be proud of the work that they did. And I echo what others have said. It's your right to pick your your people who are going to serve you and the election is March fifteenth, so whomever you vote for, exercise your vote and exercise it carefully. It's been an absolute honor to do this. I think I speak for everyone on this council. It's been our honor to serve you in this council. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
In a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.